Okay. Docket now, who's going first?
Their presentation?
No.
I think so.
One of them.
That was last meeting.
Okay. I have to.
Sorry.
This is not everybody.
My phone's ringing, so you guys stand up.
Um, I didn't see anything about the request for these permits that addressed what they're going to do about the septic system, which is designed for a much lower number of people from the bank and also what are they going to do with the wastewater and byproduct water from the brewery?
Thank you, sir.
Give me the.
Well, sadly, I missed the last, um, the last meeting where the plan was outlined. Is there a way just to give a two-second overview?
Sure, you haven't seen it, Jacob, you want to do that?
Hi.
So whoever wants to talk to us.
How are you? So it's basically the same plan that we had for ninety main street.
Right.
Same, um, it's actually around about the same size, square footage wise. If you look at the interior space and what it was versus what it is now at the bank, uh, the system's going to be the same size. Where the banks drive through, drive-through ones, we're gonna fence that in and it'll be the outdoor area for kind of like a beer garden area.
Okay.
And, um, I'll just show you real quick.
Oh, oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. Well, that's the, the front building. And I'm just showing her the submission from last time.
So there's a, there's a side yard where.
So that can happen? Yeah, that's the, uh, that's the old drive-through right there. It actually kind of looks kind of funky from the, from the Spanish point.
So there's no seating on top? You're not doing it?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, that's the part that I'm alarmed about. I heard just the grapevine, there is this idea of putting seating on top. So totally against that.
Okay.
Because it, uh, will affect the.
Why don't we find you come up?
Sure. Um, this looks fine, like the idea of having a, um, seating on the side, on ground level, looks totally fine, but the idea that there would eventually be seating on top is very distressing. Without, I mean, if you wanted to build up the whole thing and make that a. Sorry, building that's different, but they have like the balcony and outdoor seating up there. Uh, I'm completely alarmed about that idea because we live across the street. Sound carries more light, more noise, more disturbance. Even though I'm sure I would enjoy going there occasionally, it's not that I don't like go to a brewery to be here, but the seating on top, I'm completely against. It was just, uh, because we live across the street, the sound will carry, the music will carry, or lights will carry. It just changed, also, even if we didn't just live right across the street, the idea, um, of having seating up there just changes the whole quality of the downtown street, which is at the moment sort of a more peaceful environment. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but just, just to be clear, we're not, we're not asking to do that now. It's, uh, an idea we've discussed for, you know, we're gonna see how this works.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, so it's not before anyone now, it's not gonna happen this year, so.
Would you, would you be coming back to the, to the board for that?
Yes. We would, we would be for that.
And we would also, just as we did when we spoke last, we spoke with each other.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, all of this for us is about consultation, so we would want to take all of that or any proposal, were any proposals.
And, and design it accordingly, if we wanted to go that way, you know, we.
In a second story on top of that building, it seems like maybe that's an opportunity, but an outdoor deck, you know, like a beer garden deck is, uh, the major terrible thing. Just to register, just to register that with everybody. Uh, but I'm just gonna look over this while everyone else comments.
Do you guys want to comment on, again, Star's comments about the waste?
Yes.
And, uh, again, what you're gonna be doing?
Yes.
Cause I know you outlined it last time.
Yeah, so Dave and I had a meeting before, uh, we got the approval to come here or needed approval to come here or rejection come here, sorry. Um, so there's only. So, uh, yes, there's, there's only one part of the process that produce, produces a type of waste that is not good for, uh, the filter sand. And that's when, uh, after the beer's been harvested from a, uh, there was the residue that's left over needs to come out and we need to clean the batch to go through, so that's got only about thirty or forty gallons. We're actually gonna collect that entirely and it's gonna go into a container to be brought to another facility out of town. Uh, so it's not gonna go into the system at all.
Where, where does it go when it goes out of town?
Uh, basically, it'll be where you, where septic, uh, not septic, where, um, porta potties get emptied and treated. Uh, the same companies that service that will bring the tank filled.
Okay.
Do you have anybody online, Kristen?
Uh, no one is, put their hands up. Is anybody on Zooms like to comment?
Okay, at this point, we will both the public hearing, making the motion to do so.
I'll say that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very. I was almost this late.
I was here early. I came with John.
Okay, um, at this point then we are ready to open our meeting. There's a chance that here's some news. Push for the flag. Okay, Amy sent us all minutes, I had looked over them and, uh, I guess you change Brendan's name by now on it.
Um, I don't.
Yes, I told him to contact you.
Exactly.
Yeah, good. Uh, did anybody have any comments or any problems with the minutes as they got them?
Nope. There's just a couple of spell check things that got caught, but we're good, I think.
My, my cat. You can also let me know if you see some.
Okay.
But usually I, I'm pretty used to doing that.
I think it's one which, uh, God, this became Chavez, like Chavez, where the Dodgers play.
Why not make it one? See that, I wouldn't imagine, but I'm not up on. Now, a motion to accept our minutes from our last meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
I'm on second. Motion on the floor to accept the minutes, any comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any against? Okay, now we have some correspondence that arrived fifteen, twenty minutes ago or something like that. Not printed, it off, Amy printed it off. We got our letter back from County of Sullivan on Big Eddie Brewery. And after heading, it says, the following review has been conducted in accordance with GML two thirty-nine LMNN. One, project description, special use permit to operate a brewery restaurant. Two, applicant A M J R LLC. Geographic location, County Route fifty-two, Bridge Street, and that's within five hundred feet of it, as far as I say that. Although it doesn't particularly tell us that there. Agency referrals, Sullivan County DPW, no comments. Anticipated inter municipal or countywide impacts, none. Recommendation, local determination, from Heather Brown interim commissioner. So that's good news. We got a letter, which I don't lead most of the letters from our friends because we all get them, but this letter has some pertinent points in and makes sense that we will be looking at. So it's about Baba receiver. And they're asking us to put some ideas in the special use permit. One, natural wood privacy fencing around the proposed swimming pool on Nekka. Now, they will have a privacy fence, but I don't know about natural wood. Do we want to ask for something like that? It's, it's okay, but I don't know if it's gonna look any better than a black chain link that wouldn't show. Because as it weathers, its privacy fences don't become too pretty.
Well, the pool's gonna be outside anyway.
Exactly.
On the, on the top of the hill, on the other side of the lake, so you wouldn't even see the pools. So whatever they want to do there, I can't see that being a problem.
And the Nekka is a building, so.
Right.
With the fence around it. So we are approving more fencing than the zoning allows because they need eight foot for their religious purposes or something, but, we could put something in to keep it as unobtrusive as possible. And that's a normal thing. Uh, no outdoor sound amplification, and I think they've already told us that they will not be doing that, so that's fine. Limiting outdoor lighting to downlights and use of warm colored LEDs, compact fluorescent stimmers, motion sensors and timers can help reduce elimination levels. And that's why they're zoning that you have to use downlights and how much movements are allowed to go on. So that should be covered by either what they do or by the code enforcement officers telling them, you can't do that. Establishment of escrow fund for instances of area of water, pond streams, groundwater and well damage or contamination caused by increased stress on the local aquifer or potential inadequate septic system, chemical pool backwashing, overwhelmed sewage fields, et cetera.
Can we do it? I don't, I don't even know how you articulate it, and how would you establish the amount?
Mm-hmm.
All on speculative.
And this is if these things are happening. Say they overuse groundwater, their wells fail, then they're gonna have to bring in the duck, drill more wells, they've got a hundred, some acres, they've got plenty of space up in the back, they've got a pond to feed it. So it shouldn't be a problem for them to keep it, and if they have a problem with it, they have to deal with it. They know they've gotta have adequate water, that's a given. Any other comment on that?
No.
Rather than fencing the perimeter of the property, give plans, and I don't think we have any plans for that, that we've seen.
I think the site plan shows priority.
No, we request natural green barriers, hedges, native shrubbery, so on. Yeah, we tried that at the solar farm. So go up and take a look at how good that came out. Dead trees. So be careful what you ask for. They think they'll look nice, but doesn't look so good. Setback for any actions a hundred feet from property lines, natural green native buffer to be maintained and preserved in order to maintain real character and aesthetic. Well, they have a certain setback, probably fifty feet in that area that can't build up to the rain. So we got that.
Most, most everything is at least a hundred feet back, you know?
Removal and remediation of underground fuel tanks on property to D E C standards would sign off from D E C a conditional remediation. Do we have any purview over fuel tanks as planning board? Is this a D E C? If there's a problem with it, they come in and they jump on you nice and hard. I don't think.
It goes through code, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, if there's a problem, code and obviously they would report to the D E C and they come in.
The D E C has the enforcement jurisdiction over that issue.
Yeah, we do not. You don't want them there, but I don't think you will find any former camp that does not have fuel tanks because they all had their own gasoline supply for their vehicles, so they didn't go to gas stations. So there probably are tanks there and the purchaser needs to be aware of that they'll have to get them removed, and if they don't want to do it, they should make the seller do it. But again, not our thing to get into. We can, we can suggest that, that they be careful that they don't get in trouble with the fuel tank and D E C.
If you have, um, someone commented, just moving to your.
Well, yeah, I'm not done.
Just letting you know, if you're interested.
Fenced in garbage contacters. Well, you don't have them, you're gonna have a problem, so I think that's a given. It's gotta be bear resistant because there are bears there and they will be into the garbage instantly. Parking only designated parking lots, no parking on sides of road, blind pond road, deck Simon Road, the Dryer Road.
That's a given, yeah.
We can say that, I don't know if anybody's gonna make the clients park some other place, but the owner might have those instructions. No changes in use without municipal approval, that's where zoning goes. Commitment to open communication with Beaver Brook Owners Association to address community questions and concerns as they may occur. We could ask them to do that, but I think we could force them to. Yeah, on the scope of the conditions that are set forth in the.
Can I, can I ask a quick question? Anybody here from Beaver Brook Association? Have any of you people approached the yeshiva to ask them if they want to be a part of your association? And why not?
They don't know the, on the property.
Yeah, but if they do, have you approached them to say, well, you'll be part of our association so that we can have give and take?
Well, when they're, you're work owners.
Okay.
Of course.
All right.
Wait, we, this association is for the government of the whole community.
Absolutely, it should be.
Good. Okay, Kristen.
Joanne said, not sure if it's just me, uh, that was me, sorry. Um, in regards to being at the water, it's about the damage to the wells inside the community. Um, the buildings are on, are right on the road in the D E C, does not know that they can exist. They're not in the D C, E C record, they're not all registered. They're all registered this.
I find it hard to believe that Joanne has not shown.
Find hard to believe that why?
Joanne is not so potential, has not informed the D E C of the.
Uh, actually, I have not.
Yeah, well, maybe you should if you want to take care of it, because that's not up to us, it's up to them.
Well, they're submitting, they're submitting engineer. Aaron was aware. I, I hit the mute by mistake. They are submitting engineering reports where the tanks are not included. So I wanted to be sure that our town is aware of possibly leaking underground storage tanks on the property.
Okay. Anybody else, Kristen?
Nobody else is raising their hand or taking.
We have some hands on the floor.
Hello, I have, I would like to say something.
Just a moment. Now it's members of the speaking. We'll, we'll get to you in a while.
Excuse me?
Later.
Okay.
Okay, we received also very late to this meeting, so we can't do much about it. Actually dealing with it, but we will go through the letter from Barton and the Judas. Look at some of the points that they mentioned and some which we may look at and we may not because they are not our thing to do. Review comments, general. My comments regard the need for corrections to the dam engineering documents to address D E C comments noted February tenth, twenty twenty-three correspondence. Now, we've had a DM and I thought he signed off. It wasn't anything that had to be done now, it's future things for them to do.
Yes, beautiful.
Future things for them to do that we're recommending. That's already been covered, we've got pages and volumes of DM reports. So does anybody feel any need to go beyond the reports we got in February? It's not gonna be corrected right now. They're going to have to do it at their expense, they've agreed to do that, so it knows it has to be done.
Is there a timeline for that?
Not really. We also feel strongly that as previously recommended, a walkthrough site inspection with the health department to reserve water and septic system components and provide a V S summary and or items requiring mitigation. I mentioned before, a qualified septic guy should pull the tank covers, ensure that baffles have not rotted off. I don't expect there's much septic material in the tank, but he could verify that quickly. Dipstick they carry, this one is sure the tanks are not due for pumpouts. His findings should go to the town, T D E and health department, preferably before the health department visit. We have any comment?
I mean, we can make some inquiry, my understanding and based on my experiences, the health department doesn't go out and do advisory inspections. You apply for whatever the applicable permit is that you need from them. They come and they do whatever the appropriate inspection that they require. They either grant the permit or they deny the permit until you do whatever compliance issues they feel are necessary. That's, that's always been my experience. I don't know that you're gonna be able to just call the health department and say, would you mind going out there and taking a look at it and tell us what recommendations you have? I, I don't think the New York State Health Department operates that way. They're not there to be in an advisory capacity to, to a local plan.
And they're gonna want them to be the owners too.
Probably so.
At that point, right?
Yeah.
Um, they, they want to have the tanks checked for their own benefit and their own expense, but they're gonna want the seller to repair. But they've gotta be in working order before they are up and operating.
I mean, I was always, I was always contemplating that whatever, i- if this board chooses to approve this application, I think one of the conditions is gonna be that they have to comply with all requirements and recommendations in the New York State Health Department with regard to their water and sewer situation, D E C as well. But those are the bodies that have jurisdiction over, over those aspects of the, of the, yeah, to judge whether they're functional or not or require modification or remediation, what have you.
The next sentence is, uh, health department proving the water and sanitary sewage disposal systems, and like you said, they're not gonna do it till they own any.
And I don't think they're gonna go out because we asked them to, to go take a look at it because we've got a pending application. We can ask, but I just, I've never seen it operate that way.
The foundation letter indicates the facility systems were, were a greater population than now proposed. However notable, nothing lasts forever, particularly inside of a septic tank or dam, withstanding the elements. The responses have been possibly at anecdotal nature. And verification is still requested to demonstrate the ability to provide one, clean potable water via the current system components or detailed understanding of items requiring repair or improvements to schedule of mitigation required after walk-through with Department of Health, but I don't think we're getting this walkthrough, so. Now, this is, of course, they have to have clean waters, they don't have enough, they're gonna have to bring in tankers to supply.
They don't have an adequate water supply, they're not gonna get a health department permit to operate.
Septic system tank inspections for baffle integrity, we already addressed this, depths of waste. So redundancy. Further receipt of, uh, New York State D E C dam safety correspondence indicating that the required information requested in their February ten twenty-three comment memo has been submitted for review and detained acceptable. At least be kind of cold what he's talking about there. Comment memo? He should have made a comment memo with that time, Bradley. There is a pedestrian bridge over the dam that would be need to close during some dam breach construction activities that at some point and perhaps remove to accomplish vegetation, tree removals and test pits in the first year improvements of section eleven of the dam's engineering assessment report. There needs to be a written acknowledgement, in my opinion, that pedestrians will be diverted to the road times where, or if the facility occupancy, construction activities occurred during the same time of year. A simple safety plan should be included and any subsequent dam improvement plans at a minimum include notation signage, diversion, diversion of pedestrians, et cetera, are recommended.
Well, that's a given, I mean.
If it's closed, you gotta walk around.
They, well, you gotta street. Cause I've been up there, so they're gonna have to put up a temporary bridge.
Or go through the road.
But, and they're not gonna walk all the way down to the road. Yeah, I can't see them not putting up a temporary bridge until the dam is fixed.
Get them canoes.
Can't say always went.
I think, I think that's a given.
You know, it is, and, and if you, I was owning it, would I get this work done when I was open for boys? Definitely not. So, you know, be kind of stupid to rip the dam out while you've got kids there. You're asking for more trouble.
Exactly.
Water and sewer memo, previous comments restated and not formally responded to by the applicant. See previous comment on large water storage tanks that have been removed. Submit copies of any plans and well yield testing to the New York State Department of Health. Assess, assesses so all parties know these facets of the form of water and sewer systems as approved originally and any subsequent improvements to help determine, verify adequate water is available for peak periods of use and fire protection and system components. Can the system deliver the NFPA and ISO required fire flows at required duration anytime when the present tanks are only partially full? I don't believe that their water system is part of their fire thing. They call the fire department, they got a pond to draw the water from. They don't have any fire hydrants out there. I would think maybe they should put in a dry hydrant on the dormitory side, the dry hydrant on the big building side, so the fire department can get water quickly. They're cheap, we have them all over town.
There is dry hydrant over there.
Oh, they are?
I think there's two.
On that, on Silver Lake or somewhere else. I know there's one on, uh, right along Blind Pond, just down a few feet.
Um, I'm not sure exactly where that is.
I think when Art Horco was here, he said there was dry hydrants out there, but he was a little unhappy about how easy it was to get to. If I remember right, when Art was here, and that a little improvement needed to be made to get to that dry hydrant. And then they would be fine with it.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't see why they can't have them right into Silver Lake. And that would be their fire protection. Include facility maximum population of staff and client along with average daily water demand, peak hourly demand, and what maximum fire and demand would be based on building and occupancy classifications based on New York State Building and Fire Codes. I think we've already talked water, we've already talked fire, so that doesn't go. Will there be a filter, full filter backwash system tributary to a septic system? If not, where will discharge go? What is backwash discharge lane and equal, is equalization necessary? Well, I think they showed us on the plans that they were going to put in a field for the pool backwash. Everybody remember anything about that?
Yeah, I think it's on the plans.
At this point.
Yeah. I can, I think the, the appropriate reasonable thing to do would be, because you guys have just seen this this week and the captain hasn't seen it all, I think we ought to send it to them and ask them to respond to it. See what, and see what their response is, and then you guys as a board can evaluate that response and reach a conclusion. So. See what, see what their response is, and then you guys as a board can evaluate that response and reach a conclusion, so.
Amy, would you forward this to Joel and anybody else that should get it and request a response for the April meeting?
And I would do the same with that letter that came from the association with.
Do you have various recommended conditions that they were suggesting?
It's a response. They may do some things voluntarily, even if it's something that that you may or may not impose on them.
Right.
Let's see what they're thinking.
Okay, do we want to like couple of comments?
That's entirely empty. With the board, I should say, there's the assume.
The Met first.
And, sorry, can you repeat what you just said about water? You can hear.
I'm sorry, you told me. My, my suggestion was that there are two letters, the one can be engineered, that would work, and the letter from the associate area, number one. Forwarded to the applicant, because I don't believe that they've, I mean, it just came in recently, it's been found. They certainly haven't seen, let's get their response reaction, let's see what their position is with regard to the issues that are raised in it.
They're gonna build what they have something.
Chairman, record secretary.
I don't think so. You're gonna insist on that? I don't think so.
I mean, I don't think that.
When we're ready, we will. Uh, please, quiet. Quiet or leave. I plan on being. Now. Anything else from this we need to do?
No, I think the thing to do is just to get it to the, um, to the applicant and and let's get their response to that, because we're still waiting.
We sent that out.
We're still, we're still gonna get responses from them to the comments that were made at the, at the last two meetings.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Marshall. He said that they, that we would get a written submission with regard to all of those comments, and and I think. We should get this put into that package, too, so you get a complete response to it, and then you guys work.
And so we have merits of it. So we have a response to it, I don't think we should have put comments on it. When we get our response next meeting and that's read, then is the time to have comments on this.
Thank you.
I didn't say that, but if we've cared to have a comment period, we could open that. You know, then we will have something, we'll have a response to this. So we have know something about these items and what they feel, and then we can comment on how we like their response. And is it good? Does it need more?
Can we, as a public, have some time after we've received that response to, after we've received the purchaser's response to digest it and to make our own response? To comment on it, I mean.
I don't know how, I don't know how that would work out.
Well, to ask us to respond on the fly.
Well, you have.
Just hear Mr. Borshov speak, it is, it's very difficult for us to do, and I think that it's not in the spirit of, of public.
I guess we would have to see how complicated it gets as to whether that would be necessary or not. If it's simple answers, it shouldn't be necessary. If it's complicated answers, maybe necessary. I think we just have to, uh.
I would respectfully say that simple answers to you may not be the same as simple answers to us in the neighborhood. We may have more questions.
True. Okay.
Thank you, thank you for considering that.
Anything else on this? Okay, Narrowsburg Brewery. We've had our public hearing. We have an application, we've gotten accounting response back. Anybody have any comments on this before we go on with it? We looked at this pretty thoroughly when it was in the other building. We've gotten our plans, they've scaled them down a little bit and. Seem to. Be okay. There was a comment before about the septic system, if it's not up to par. That would be pointing to the lease agreement, I would feel, between the tenant and landlord who's gonna repair it. Being the landlord has access to the septic people, maybe they would be able to handle that.
Yeah, a little bit of that.
No. But.
I think what, I I think at the point you approve it, I think it would be appropriate to impose a condition that, as Jacob explained, that, you know, that. Byproduct, I guess, for lack of a better word, that's gonna be produced from the, will actually be removed and disposed of, you know, by a, by a appropriate licensed carrier. For that purpose and and not be put into the system.
Be okay with the condition that Dave and I come up with an agreement and we sign on whatever we.
Yeah, and I think we should, I think we should, we, as a town, the plan, we should be guided by what the, what the town's water and sewer superintendent feels. I mean, he, he operates the system and he knows that system and what it can tolerate and what it can't tolerate.
Dave and I both, we sat down and did research on, he researched breweries, I researched wastewater, and we kind of came to this agreement. Uh, based on the science and what the guidance from the Brewers Association of America says and, and what, you know, filter sand.
Are you trying a resolution?
I can if you want.
But you just want to give us more there.
So I'm gonna do that.
Quickly.
Yeah, I'll just, I've got on a roll back here, like, paper towel, they put up a sheet, and here you go. I'm happy to do it, I, you know, if that's the board's pleasure, I can do that, and I, you know, you got an applicant that's. Looking to get going.
Right, and that's gonna hold this up.
I don't think, I, I know I, I know I.
Can we do an approval and say what the resolution's gonna be and they'll write it up?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the resolution, at least unless you guys tell me something different. You know, with, with the formal resolution, if I were to prepare it, would it would just have some recitals in terms of the process that we've gone through? And 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 the finding and determination to approve it, and imposition of the condition that we just discussed. I I don't know that there's gonna be anything else more to it. I haven't heard anything else unless, you know, you guys believe there should be something else to it. I haven't heard anything in the conversation, especially by the board of this.
Okay, well then, let's throw a motion on the floor and see where we go with it. I make a motion when approved. Okay, thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Subject to the condition that they comply with the, why don't we say that they comply with the requirements of the Narrowsburg Water and Sewer Department? Uh, with respect to discharge of effluent. Into the system, how's that sound, right?
And I think you showed us with the back door there where things are gonna come and go, where you'll take it out, hold it on the plant, didn't you?
What's that?
You have the back door into the old kitchen, and you said that was gonna be for things coming and going.
Well, yeah, for, for beer going in and out, you know, and eventually humans, but.
Yeah.
Not during the mornings.
Yes.
Be for stuff like that, yes.
Okay. All right, you got that, conditions added to it, Amy?
Yeah, and I was.
We have a motion on the floor for approval to have any further comment from board members. Okay, approval, I, Mike.
I.
I'm an I.
John, I.
You didn't get a second on that.
I second it.
Sorry, I thought we had, okay.
Hi.
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 All right, motion carried. You'll get your formal wording from Mr. Klein, and you can work on it with him.
All right, now get to work.
We have no new items coming before us this evening that I know of. Any further comment from board members?
None.
No, sir. Okay, we have set up for April meeting that will be meeting. It's April twenty fifth. So it'll be at seven thirty. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion. Motion on the floor to adjourn, approval, I.
I.
I.